Thanks for coming. Let's go ahead and do a last segment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we will get started and to do that, we need an approval of our agenda for tonight. Move to approve the agenda as printed?
Second.
So Kim has a move to approve our agenda and Wayne? I think yes, I seconded it. Any comments or questions about that? No? Okay, if you're in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, please say no. Okay, our agenda is approved. Thanks, everyone. Okay, so audience, time to be have... Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? Now be your chance. There are agenda cards in the back that you can fill out and give to Val Bakma right there. Okey dokey. And we'll move right along then. Okay, item 5A on our agenda, October 2 enrollment report.
So I'm going to do page 1. Connie's going to do page 2. The October enrollment report is there in your packet. The good news about the report is that it is in line with what we budgeted and what we staffed on. A little bit puzzling piece is the areas that the students came in. We anticipated being down a few students this year just due to roll-ups and the fact that the new developments don't have any homes in them yet. The high school numbers are a little bit puzzling, especially at our junior class. We're down about 110 kids from last year's sophomore class, which is a little unusual. So we've got some digging to do to try to figure that out. It makes me feel like we're doing the right work in terms of our... Every student known by name, strength, and need, how do we keep those kids in our system? But as I say, the good news is is that these numbers are in line with what we've built our budget on and what we staffed our buildings on. Happy to answer questions about the numbers.
Mark has a question. Good mark.
Are the... Is the 110 concentrated in one high school or is this across the board?
Across the board. Century saw basically flat from sophomore to junior class. The other three schools all saw between 30 and 45 student drop.
Seeing as it's across the board, are there any chances of measurement there?
Well, these are the numbers that are reported by the registrars in the synergy system every day.
I was just going to ask, after you do the digging, will we have a report back on your findings? Or is that...
I'm happy to share whatever I can find, yeah. I've got a spreadsheet that's got about a million tabs on it right now, trying to drill down into this thing. I'm looking at this time last year, end of the year last year, and going back for several years. So trying to identify any kind of pattern I can.
Do we have any way that the district collects data from families that are leaving or students that are leaving as to like they're moving?
Yeah, I don't. I don't have the individual student data. I just have the total number of students by grade level.
Probably even can involve talking to the registrars to get that information. We have a 10-day drop data that we get weekly. And in retrospect, I don't recall a drastic change in that grade particularly. So it makes me hypothesize if they just moved for some reason. But we can dig into it.
Okay. So yes, we will get you some more information as we develop it. Probably won't be before the 7th.
Wayne, you were lit up and then you weren't. I don't know if I did that.
You're doing a great job asking the question.
It was also as I was trying to figure out how to do things, so I didn't know if I just deleted you. Okay, great. Excellent. Any other questions on it? All right, I'll go ahead and go on and move us to page 2. So you can kind of see that we, come 2014, started targeting our differentiated class ratios and really targeting, focusing on our K-1, 2 numbers and decreasing those. And that connected with our volume and the budget connected with that. And we've continued to keep that focus in our work, especially as we've moved to full-day kinder. Having that 26:1 ratio has been helpful to support and especially assist our K-1, 2 classes to keep them smaller. And a lot of that is determined by the needs of the building. There's dialogue that goes on in conversation with staff and with principal around, you know, what the focus is going to be and the supports of those pieces and really trying to stay targeted with those numbers. And something that we've done this year for the last, I would say, about three years, we've gone out into buildings and we've done field trips to really look at what's going on. If we see like... Sometimes kids don't come with packages of 29 in each class. And so we've been able to add some additional FTE and we partner with the executive directors of OSP. We partner with the principal and just talk with them, you know, like how can we best support your school? And I always kind of like to talk about floor, mid-level, and ceiling focuses on what your pie-in-the-sky hope and what can we really do? Because, you know, with the amount of additional fix-it, we call it FTE, to help support those pieces, we try to be mindful of that. And then also, like we know, as North Plains is growing, we need to be mindful of making sure that we save some of the FTE to help them as they go into the second semester of the year. So that's just an example of how we've supported the FTE components in HR. And then as you look at the second table, you can see that the overall changes, that we have more diverse students that are coming into our system and we're having fewer percentage of white students. And I link that back to kind of our goal that we have for the strategic plan, that we want to have staff that represent and mirror, you know, our students of diverse backgrounds. And something that I noted was that the multiple race is something that's been somewhat newly added. And so people... You can see maybe some of the numbers have gone down, but you know, as a person of color myself, I fall into a couple of different categories. And so I think the pieces that some people in that number has... Multiple has gone up over and you can see as the numbers have gone down. But overall, our multi-diverse students are increasing. And with growth in our community, we know we're going to have, you know, growth in our schools. So this is just information to kind of see how enrollment is, staffing, and the makeup of our students. Any questions? Thank you. All right, thank you, guys. We will go to the next item, which is the summer school program report.
I just wanted to take a second and just hold up. We have the federal programs. You probably know Olga, but you might not know that she has really improved the way we do summer school over time. And I want to acknowledge also the work that goes in from multiple departments, nutrition services, transportation, all of the principals and teachers and classified staff who all make incredible summer programs happen in our district. So with that, Olga, thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. In reference to the summer school report that you have in your packets, you will see or have you have seen that we offer a variety of summer school opportunities. In our attempt to extend the school year to a year-round system, we offer the variety of summer school after this for across the district. In addition to just the regular summer school program, I wanted to share two highlights with you tonight. I could speak all night about all the great things that we're going to do in the summer, but I don't want to do that for the second time. So the two highlights that I wanted to share with you are, one, that we were fortunate that we were able to bring four bi-national teachers from Mexico. As a result of that, they were able to reinforce knowledge of history, culture, and traditions in our dual-language and migrant programs, which were the two largest programs during the summer. They also collaborated with Hillsborough School District teachers best research practices and culturally, cultural development pedagogy. The second highlight is that we, due to some additional funding that was sent our way quite a bit, we were able to provide additional support and services. Just to make a few, we developed a current academy for the first time ever. We're able to offer weekly work sessions and workshops to our families. Some of them were led by the bi-national teachers. We were also able to provide elementary summer school with the dual-language and migrant summer schools with two student resource specialists, counselors. We added specials, library, DE, and music, which are programs that tend to bring students and attract students to want to come to school and stay at school. So attendance is really good. Actually, it is way better than it is at the secondary level. As you can see, we serve over 600 students. An additional highlight that I didn't just done here is that we also ended up with some carryover in Title 1 to the degree that all 10 Title 1 schools were offered some additional funding to run some summer school extended program for their students. At this point, I will be more than happy to respond to any questions that you might have.
I just had a question about maybe an example of what the culturally responsive curriculum was that was incorporated in the secondary program? Just an example.
So we are in the process of developing a ethnic studies course. So as part of the cultural development pedagogy that we were able to offer in the secondary program was by sharing some of the work that the bi-national teachers were able to provide to the elementary school. Not to the extent that they were traveling back and forth each day. They did have a few gatherings and meetings, but that is definitely something that we need to explore in the future. We were able to provide the elementary program with ongoing daily support and the teachers were placed at the elementary level. So one of the things that the secondary folks have asked for is in the future, when we ask for bi-national teachers, can we also incorporate them into the secondary program? So that is something that we will continue to explore.
Any other questions to comment?
So some of the new board members may not know what a big deal Olga is in the community. And so while she's standing there, I just wanted an opportunity to tell you a few good things about her. So last year, she was awarded the Oregon Association of Central Office Administrators, Administrator of the Year in the state of Oregon. And specifically what that's all about is what she's done in terms of the access that she has created for so many of our students in the district. Her and her department have really led the charge with increasing the presence of the PAC and building just a huge skill set there. And so I just, before she sat down, I wanted an opportunity for the new folks to know that about her and just know that we are kind of... We consider her a secret weapon and that we have. Really does nice work for us. So thank you, Olga.
I'm brushing.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike. It is an honor to serve Hillsborough schools. And so I'm very proud to be a product of this where I went to school and feels really like it's my life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to also say thank you for the great report and all of the great work that was done over the summer with these students. There's so much detail in the board packet about all the great things that happened. So thank you. And as I was talking, Martin pushed his buttons. Go ahead, Martin.
I'd just like to say in my own defense, I've known for quite some time that Olga was a superstar.
Okay. So let's go to Adam, financial report.
Included in your packet tonight is the financial report. We, in the business office, are finalizing the audit work with the auditors. We've had them in our office for about a week. Now we're emailing the remaining documents back and forth. Our goal is to have... We've actually sent them a draft copy of the CAFR that they're reviewing right now. We're hopeful of having that completely wrapped up by the 1st of December, which would be a record for us. That would be awesome. We're really trying to get it done before Coral Unger in our office leaves for maternity leave. So Coral carries a big part of that process. So we're trying to get this all done before Peyton Harmon shows up. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the financial report.
Any questions? I don't see any. Thank you. Okay, so then let's head on down to 5D policies for first reading. We're starting with 5D set number 1, EFAA AR, and Adam and Nate.
Come on up, Nate. Nathan Rodel, manager of our... Not manager, executive director of Nutrition Services. Sorry, Nate. And Nate knows all this stuff. So I'm going to let him talk about it.
All right, so EFAA AR is a revision OSPA recommended that we revise based on a law of the past over the summer and the losses. We have to make changes reflecting our practices before January 1 of 2018. So these are the changes. I took the opportunity to update some language in the first couple pages to align with our program better. So it's matching language, so we don't have maybe two different words saying the same thing. And then on the page... I don't know what is in your packet, six of seven of the policy. It's the language that references the nuggets of House Bill 3454 about students' school debt and charging and shaping. Any questions?
So the change is that we used to just have charge accounts for elementary students and now it's anything. Is that correct?
The change... Want to go too much into the bill unless because we haven't talked about doing that. But the bill essentially says that we can't talk to students about owing any money, which is the big change for us. And if we can't talk to them about owing money, then we have to allow them to charge. Because if we're giving them a meal, we need to account for that. And so it essentially opens up charging for 7th grade on through 12.
Is there an anticipated financial impact of that?
There is an anticipated financial impact, but I don't... We don't have any data to drive us there. I've been monitoring it based on the amount of charged meals we process per day, negative balance monitoring, just to kind of track where we're going with it. So yes. So we'll have a report to ODE and hopefully the legislature in the special session in February just to talk about the impact to Hillsborough schools through ODE.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Nate.
Okay, policy IGDA, Anna.
So this is a change on public availability of our state application for special education funds. And this is part of the ESA law that was passed. And these are the OSP recommended changes. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't see any questions. Does anyone have questions? Yeah, okay. Thanks, Anna. And let's go to the GBA, equal employment opportunity.
All right, so the equal opportunity, employment opportunity policy is... There are only just a slight change in the language around parental status, which was an OSP recommended. And so just an alignment in our language. Everything else pretty much stays the same. Got any questions? Thank you.
All right. And then we'll go to policies for providing school admissions and transfers. Let's move them with that.
All right. So we have a bunch of transfer-related policies here that we're going to go over. I'm actually glad Olga's still here just in case there are any questions about the homeless policy of this admission and where students attend school. And then just so you know, probably coming back to you at a future board meeting because we're still working on trying to combine two existing policies, JDC and JDCA, which are respectively school admissions and admission of resident students. So a lot of overlap in those two policies. So we'll be coming back to you with that. The first one, JC, pretty straightforward, school boundary areas. And all of these are just an attempt to not only get current with legislation that may have changed or rules that may have changed at the state level and then just again, trying to get in closer alignment with OSPA recommended language because that just... Not that we can't have our own flair to certain policies, it just makes updating a little easier when it comes to that. So school boundary areas. I guess the big change here is that district transportation may be provided if resources and schedules allow. Otherwise, transportation will be a family responsibility. That's always been a big aspect of our in-district transfer policy is that it's a voluntary benefit to families to be able to do if we're able to work it out with the schools, but they have to provide their own transportation. Any other on that one? Next one, JDCB, admission of non-resident students. So this is the first of two policies that we're going to see that really talk about that inter-district transfer opportunity that students have. This one is really about what it means for Hillsborough School District when we agree to bring students in from other districts and the different mechanisms by which that can happen, either by inter-district transfer agreement, which is really kind of the House Bill 2747 process that we'll go through in the April-May timeframe. And we'll be talking about that later in the spring. Open enrollment, which happens a little earlier in the spring, which is that March window that's been identified by the legislature. Tuition, it's always been an option for us. I don't believe I've ever seen anybody in my time here that has actually paid tuition, but it's an option. And then court placement. The courts do have that opportunity to place students if they believe it's in a student's best interest. And then the remainder of the document kind of talks about, you know, if you're going to do one of those things, like what is involved in that and how can students be given priority? How are they selected? Different things like that.
Erica has a question.
Yeah, I was just wondering on the first two items on there. Why it says of the affected school boards instead of district? And the rest of the document, it talks more about district, but there it talks about the boards. So I was wondering why the choice of words.
Yeah, that is interesting. Anytime it talks about transfers, it does kind of talk about the board ultimately having that responsibility, even though, you know, 99% of the time that responsibility is delegated to staff. But for example, when it comes to determining the amount of openings that we're going to have, if we are going to participate in open enrollment, that's a board decision. That'll be coming to you for a vote. So they are board decisions, student movement, things like that. But again, most of the time it's just delegated to the district. So especially in where we're finding that greater alignment with OSPA policies, I think we'll see more of that kind of language where it talks about boards.
Any other questions about that one?
Okay, and then we have JDCBD. This is the one for homeless students. And just a big crux of how we care for our homeless students is that if they have qualified for services under the McKinney-Mento Act, then they are, you know, we are required to allow them to remain in the school at which they last attended if everyone agrees that's in their best interest and if that's what the family desires. And if that is the case, then we need to be transporting them to that previous school. Just trying to remove barriers for our homeless students to have some regular school attendance going on. Oh, I skipped one. I skipped one.
That's okay.
Sorry. Let's talk homeless. Anybody have a question on that one?
I do. Is this the only place where we talk about homeless students in our broad-spectrum policy?
I don't think so. I think we... There are a few other...
Well, I didn't mean it. It wasn't necessarily a gotcha, but down a little bit later, we took... In the transfer policy, inter-district transfer of resident students, there is a homeless student paragraph. But really, what I was... The intent of my question was, do we need to focus more on that issue other than this just very brief one page in terms of policy or board focus?
Well, this is pretty much specifically in that category of policies talking about admission.
Okay.
So it's not meant to be the holistic care that we provide to homeless students. It's really about how they are assigned to schools.
Okay. I was... You might want to go on, Lisa?
Okay.
I was listening to a news report just today about another school district in another state where they had really a tremendous homeless population. And they really wrapped their brain on what that meant to serve that population. And they had a thing called a drop-in center set up at each of their comprehensive high schools set up at each of their comprehensive high schools, as opposed to a dropout center. It was a drop-in center, where they could get, like, a new backpack, or a pair of shoes, or really kind of meet their needs in a more rubber-meets-the- roadway, in a broader sense. And, you know, my sense of homelessness in Washington County is it's a growing issue, and I'm wondering if that's presenting in an increasing way to us as a district, and if maybe there's more we need to do from a policy standpoint on that issue? It's just a, it's just a question, not necessarily a...
Do you want to say something? In Hillsborough, we do have that drop-in center. It is actually physically located at Miller Education Center, and it is staffed by two McKinney-Bento liaisons. The McKinney-Bento liaisons are funded under Title I. We do have some legal obligations under Title I to identify, recruit, identify, support homeless students. And we also, well, police service, and also serve the families. So there is also resources in the community that those two liaisons are able to access. Prior to this last year, those liaisons were hired for 10 months only. We were giving additional funds under Title I to extend their contracts and other program policies. So they are available during the summer to provide services to those families, for school around. Where in the past, we terminated the services at the end of May, and we said goodbye, come to us in September. And we are ongoing that. We are connecting those students that are actually coming, providing them with clothing, shoes, food, whatever it is that they need. Transportation is also under Title I. So we, we give them bus access on a monthly basis, and so whatever it is that they need, we're able to access.
And Travis, do you want me to talk a little bit about the inter-agency approach?
Yeah, just ask a little bit if it was okay if I shared a little bit on the sort of a roundtable that she's part of, where organizations like Home Play and Hillsborough are part of, and the library convenes to talk about coordinating resources, so that each of the agencies has a specific part in carrying students and families that are in that situation. And so I, this is the person that I attended last year. Olga knows she's impressed by the amount of attention to this topic, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Mark, because our community, like other communities, is experiencing a spike in families that are experiencing homelessness, or are doubled up in terms of occupancy of places that are meant for one family. And so I'm impressed by the network of support that Olga has internal to our district, but then also facing outward toward other community agencies. So, that's not all in policy, but that's a part of our approach right now.
Thank you.
I just wonder if it would be helpful if we, so we've done quite a bit of work in this area, and there's a, there's a number of the elements of the work that we've done that is actually required by statute. And so I wonder if it would be helpful for, for you to receive a presentation just regarding what it is that we do. It's pretty, it's pretty all-encompassing, and that may put your mind at ease a bit in terms of, is there need for policy? If you, if you just had a glimpse into some of the work that's being done. So we can get that scheduled and provide that, that would be helpful.
Thank you. So I do volunteer with a shelter called Family Promise. And it serves Washington County, but their, their dayhouse is in Hillsborough. And I had a wonderful encounter one week with a young lady who attended Aloha High School. But she was coming into the dayhouse in downtown Hillsborough, and then trying to figure out how to get to Aloha High School. So this policy on homeless students, if, if the homeless shelter she's attending is in Hillsborough, and the intent of that family is to find housing ultimately in Hillsborough, is that somebody, is that a student that we could enroll in a Hillsborough district? Even if, at the moment, they don't, they have some actual connection to Aloha, but it's really getting increasingly difficult to sustain?
I, they, they can. It's really the family's decision. If they would like her to remain in Aloha,
Okay.
then Beaverton is required to provide transportation to that student at Aloha. We have, we have...
It's the district they want to attend.
We have McKinney-Bento students attending our schools from Salem, from Woodburn, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Martin, oftentimes what we find on that is that it really is the discretion of the family. And oftentimes what we find, the family that is displaced, they want to, they want to hold on to that connection they have with their previous school. And because they don't know that, what the length of their situation is going to be. And so oftentimes, there is that desire to maintain that connection. Depending how long the situation lasts, then other decisions may be made by the family. But they do have a great deal of discretion regarding their desires and which school they attend.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I'm sorry about skipping. I missed JDCBD, which is a proposed policy. And I know in the past, anyway, we've been a bit loathe to add policies to our very lengthy list of those that we already have. But this one I felt okay about, only because we have ARs and other procedural things that are tied to this policy, but this policy wasn't one that we had on our books. So I thought, just from a, you know, cleanliness, and so things would nest up in the right way, it might make sense to have an actual policy called in-district transfers, not just administrative regulations that describe in-district transfers. So that was the reason behind this one. It's relatively benign. By the same token, you're not required to add anything that's an optional proposed policy, so.
Any comments or questions about that? JDCBD?
Then we have assignment of students to schools. So basically, this just talks about, the expectation is that students attend in the area where they live, unless there are extenuating circumstances or they fill out and are approved to have a transfer, or it's required under a stimulation of the Every Student Succeeds Act. And of course, that needed to be changed from NCLB, so.
I did have a question. Sorry about the previous one, I just kind of skipped over. But I noticed it didn't talk anything about, or mention anything about transportation, as opposed to the other ones. Some, the ones before, I was just looking for it. There is, it's a district transportation, maybe provided if resources and schedules allow. Otherwise, transportation will be family responsibility. And I was thinking if that could somehow be on this one as well, due to the nature of some students requesting because of having issues with, like, you know, acts of violence, or something like that that's mentioned on the policy, that that would be something difficult for the families to also have to deal with, if that language would be included, if that's something that's, that we can do.
So you're saying you'd prefer it if it had similar language to JC? Actually, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if we can add that same language that's on the other policy to that same, to the proposed one.
Well, I think that the reason that one in JC is more, a bit more permissively written is because it talks about students wanting to access a particular program during the school day, which is kind of more in line with our college and career pathways work, not something that's going to be happening every day. I think we're not really in a position where we can say that we're going to accommodate anybody we can, and then the, and then if we can't, it's your responsibility. I think in most situations, our default needs to be it's the family's responsibility, unless there's an extreme hardship, or unless it's kind of one of these problematic things that we've decided is something that we are going to try to provide transportation for.
I guess I just would like a little bit more, I thought the language would be a little bit more this, go one way or the other. But, and I'm a little still unclear, when we decide to add that to some policies and when we don't. And that might be something that we need to talk a little bit more, I'm not clear.
I appreciate Erica's point. I think the first paragraph in JDCBB, it would make sense when it's in in-district transfer, not to provide transportation. However, the circumstance in the second paragraph is someone moving schools because of a safety issue. That would not necessarily be a child choosing to go to a different school. It's a safety concern that's, that's making them go to a different school. And if they're being displaced due to a safety concern, do we want to provide transportation? I mean, I have no idea how frequently this actually happens with bullying and that sort of thing. But if, if a student is moving for safety concerns, it seems like that's a bigger issue than just... I'd like to put a century not one cut, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, are we talking about JDCBB or JCC?
BBB. So in BBB, it's in-district transfer students, but the second example in the second paragraph is about someone who would want an in-district transfer for safety concerns.
Well, a school that's identified as persistently dangerous is like an official designation under the law, as opposed to somebody who just says, "I am being bullied at school."
Thank you.
So that's kind of a different circumstance.
That's the part I didn't know. So hopefully, we don't have a school that's deemed as persistently dangerous.
Again, that hasn't happened since I've been here.
Thank you. That helps clarify, I think, for me.
So I guess, where I'm getting caught up is, if we did have a school that was identified as persistently dangerous, we obviously wouldn't be able to afford to transfer by bus hundreds of students to other schools throughout the district every day. But if we have a student who's in an unsafe situation for some reason, who's transferring to a different school, then that would probably be more feasible. So maybe there's a way to parse that out, if, if folks agree with that. Because like, like in, it's a little different than just saying, "Oh, I would rather go to this high school," you know? Again, but also not knowing sort of the context of how often this happens and all. So maybe we need to dig deeper into that and have some conversations about that before we go forward, or I, I don't know what you mean.
Well, I can tell you that it's, it would be very difficult, I think, to establish a consistent threshold for what it takes to be able to approve those kinds of things. And, without trying to sound callous, but seeing the thousands of transfer requests that come through our office, there are some where people are looking for the right answer that will get them the ability to have a transfer granted, regardless of whether or not there's evidence to support particular claims, or whether or not there's agreement between the parents and the schools as to what may or may not be actually going on with this child. So I think we set ourselves up for a very precarious situation. If, if those determinations are made simply based on what a family might say is happening, we just are in a very difficult situation with our transportation right now. And obligating ourselves further to situations that are difficult to be consistent on, it would be a little bit problematic. I can say that we have been in the situation before, when NCLB was still in place, where we had some schools that were determined to be underperforming, that we had to offer the option for those students to transfer to a school that was not considered to be in that same situation. So we have been in that space before. And, you know, we, we make it work if we have to, but it's, it's difficult.
We also have worked with families in one-on-one situations, where, where there is a legitimate concern and they have to provide transportation. So I think what Beth's trying to say, there's, there's this fine line between having a situation that we all agree is, is not workable for a family, and we do, we, we then do work with them to provide transportation, as opposed to a situation where it's a family preference, which we, we just couldn't accommodate that level of transportation need.
Um, Mark, and then Wayne.
Is it, it, so, two things then. So isn't JC sort of based on preference, and we have a provision in there? And to your point of obligating us, I think we're specifically using the word "may" in the JC one, so that we are not obligated.
Well, and again, this is a midday course that students are asking to access, as opposed to every day of the school year, transporting them to and from school.
Right, but the, so are you saying that the use of the word "may" in the JC clause obligates us?
No, I'm saying the reason that verbiage is included there is because it's talking about a midday program. Whereas you'll see in the other transfer-related policies that it talks about it being a family responsibility.
Well, JC also mentions family responsibility, right? So I mean, what Erica was asking about was in JC, using the language in JC in another place, and you mentioned that it would obligate us. And I'm asking you, do you think the language in JC obligates us?
I'm saying the language in JC, to me, is more permissive than, than leading with transportation is the family's responsibility. When it's talking about a program that we have offered, because we feel like it's an important choice program, like fire science, for example, that we want to make available to other students, and, you know, we try to accommodate as much of that as possible. If, you know, for some reason, there's maybe a more one-off program that's, that we just can't make the transportation work, but a student still wants to do it, and they can self-transport, or they want to self-transport, then, then that's going to be on them. I mean, we're not, we're not saying that at all costs, we will provide transportation to that midday program to absolutely whomever wants it. But if we're talking a transfer to a whole other school, that you want to go from Newbury to Lenox, that, you know, your default answer is, if you want to do that, you will be transporting. If, on the other hand, you want to transfer into a dual-language school, and you just cannot make the transportation work, then we will try to work with that family to make sure that that child can access the program as an equity issue to that school. This is very complicated.
It's not that complicated. I understand the distinction between a special activity and a full-time transfer. But what, what you, what you said about not including it in the language for JDCBB was that you were worried about it obligating us. And I'm concerned that if you feel that that's the case, that we, are we somehow being obligated in the JC one? Where I don't think the language in JC actually obligates us, it says "may."
I, I'm sorry, I, I feel like what I remember saying is that I felt like that language was more permissive. And could, I, I suppose it could be construed as being more obligatory, though, I, you know, the, the use of the word "may" adds, adds that layer of protection, I guess. I just wouldn't, I wouldn't lead with the, "We'll provide transportation if we can" for a voluntary transfer that's all-day, every-day to a whole different school. I think that is a counter-ambition that I would not want.
I wouldn't say we're leading with in JC as the last line of policy.
So we, we started this discussion, now, if there were, if there were a safety concern.
Safety, right.
And...
And so was the other one I was going to bring up, is that I, I think that's concerned is valid, that if we, if we put in there for safety concerns, will people manufacture a safety concern in order to make that happen? But I also feel like using the term "may" gives us the permission or the ability to, to in a special circumstance where we have a safety concern, that we could address it.
Got you.
Wayne had a thought. Oh, I'm sorry.
So I just wanted to add, you know, we're working with principals. Obviously, safety of our students is slightly primary, of most importance to us. So we really do work with families and talk with them on a case-by-case basis. So if there were an issue in a school where a student wasn't feeling safe, we put things in place to try to maintain their stability in their educational setting, whether that's different spaces that a person is in, or, you know, we have safety protocols that we put in place. And if we just can't make it work, and the family still desires it, we do our very best to find them a placement and work with the family to ensure that we can have them in a safe environment. I can tell you that we have a lot of protocols in place, and some really great resources. And so it's very rare, and I'm thinking of one time that I can recall in the last, like, 12 years, that we've actually had to make that move for a student. And that was more on like a legal issue that we just couldn't feel like this student had the, you know, emotional safety, I guess, to be in that same setting. So it's pretty rare, but we work with our kids and families, because we know that they need to be safe in order to learn. So whether or not we put it in, the policy is still something that we hope is about.
But in that case, that wouldn't necessarily be a transfer. I mean, they wouldn't go through a transfer process. We would just make...
We would work with that, and maybe it's...
Right.
And Wayne had some thoughts on the JDC?
Yeah, so, should make a little back, but I don't often find myself in a position of, reminding that we're taking a goal to drive our language more towards OSBA-recommended language for a reason. I've often argued the, on the opposite side, to get a custom language that's more clear. And in this case, my, my question and thoughts would be, in this complicated realm of legalistic terms, are, is our language directed and complying more with the OSBA recommendations or other recommendations for what the policies, how the policies, policies should read?
Well, I would say JDCBB is just a straight OSBA optional policy. So, read through it, seemed pretty straightforward. It really just kind of tees up, like I said, the policies or the ARs that sit underneath it. You know, primary among them is that, the big AR that we do every year that really details out our timelines for transfer processes. So I would say this is just straight OSBA-recommended language on JDCBB.
Thank you.
And Chuck, you turned the button off. Is that because Wayne said what you were going to say?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
It's, it's difficult for me to identify kind of where we're at as a unit. Can, would you like a, like a quick roll call? Do you want to put this on three-day read, or do you want to not, I guess?
Yeah, I don't hit three-day read. I actually, I like how Wayne pulled this back together.
Thanks, Wayne. Mark?
Yeah, I'm good.
Great, yourself?
I am.
Great.
Yeah, usually I don't.
Mark?
I'm good. Great discussion.
Okay, excellent. Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, here, are we at JCC or at...
I think we're at JCC. Um, okay. Um, okay. So.
So you had gone through that.
Yeah, I think I started, but then maybe that's when we got the questions. So again, assignment of students to schools. It'll be where you live, unless you ask for a transfer or there's some other thing at play. Again, updating NCLB language for ESSA language.
Any questions or comments about that policy?
And then our last one is JDCF, inter-district transfer of resident students. And again, this talks a little more in-depth, I guess, about the different types of ways that our own students can transfer to other districts and other students from other districts can transfer to us. It's not just how do we admit students from other districts. So it's a bit repetitive, but yet this one is meant to kind of apply to both our own resident students and, you know, as well as students from outside, so.
And any questions or comments about JDCF?
This one's pretty long. It looks like it's just OSBA suggested policy, right?
You know, now I can't remember how much of it is. We've had Ted Zare looking at some of these policies and we've gone over them a few times. And there have been some that we've been combining and other ones we've been going back to our recommended language. And yeah, this one, it looks like we did just either put in some of, you know, the language that we had in other policies or just accept what they recommended, so.
We can also, just to chime in about that, at the footnotes of policies, there's a link for the ORS or the LAR. So like for that particular policy, there are several. So we can go in and click and see what those legal requirements are that fit the policy if we want to. It's not always there, so just wanted to make sure everybody saw that. Thanks, Beth.
All right.
So those, one, two, three, four, five, six policies, plus the ones that were before it, will be going on 30-day reads for us to consider for adoption and update in November. Okay. Let's go. I think we're adding six to consent agenda, guys, which means that we can motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
So Kim has moved and Martin has seconded to approve our consent agenda as it's printed. Is there any discussion? Okay, so if you would like to approve our consent agenda as Kim moved and Martin seconded, please say aye.
Aye.
If you would not like to, please say no. Okay, we approve our consent agenda. Super. All right, action items. I have to get there and pack that. Hold on. We're going to do 7A, a plan of American Education Week, if we can all agree. There's a joke there.
Should I object to this in spirit?
Just for fun. There's a lot on the consent agenda. Okay, well, do I read the proclamation? Okay, super. All right, so we would like to, do we move first? And then I read, this is my first time doing the proclamation. You guys are really sorry. I'm ill-prepared. Do I read it and then we vote, or we move and then I read?
I would read it and then vote.
Okay, so let me read the proclamation. And then if you agree with that, then you can maybe make a motion and stuff. Okay, proclamation. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our society, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, stability, and equality. And whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas education employees, be they licensed, classified, and technical support staff or administrators, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas our nation is celebrating the week of November 13th through the 17th, 2017, as American Education Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Directors of Hillsborough School District does proclaim the week of November 13th to the 17th, 2017, as American Education Week in Hillsborough School District with the theme, "Great Public Schools: A Basic Right and Our Responsibility." The Board of Directors further encourages all citizens to extend their commitment to public education and to the future of our children by supporting our community schools through the contribution of time and energy. Date of this, 24th day of October. I don't think I have to read that. So then maybe someone could make a motion.
I move that the Board of Directors proclaim November 13th through 17th, 2017, as American Education Week in the Hillsborough School District.
I second. All right, so thanks, Erica. It has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Erica to make this proclamation about American Education Week. Is there any discussion? There is not. Okay, if you would like to make this proclamation, as Jackie moved and Erica seconded, please say aye.
Aye.
If you would not, please say no. And that motion carries 7-0. All right. We have proclaimed American Education Week, November 13th through the 17th. I won't read the joke this next year. And so, great. Thanks, guys. All righty, so now we are finding ourselves at 7D in our action agenda to appoint the budget committee members. Michelle's not here, so Adam, will you recharge it back? Or are we charging ourselves?
I think she left the motion. She left the motion with you.
Yep, I've got it. We've got it. Here we go. I move that the Board of Directors appoint the slate of candidate states identified during the work session to the four vacant positions on the Budget Committee as follows. Appoint Elizabeth Gwen Christensen to Position 1, which expires on June 30, 2020. Appoint Alexander Diaz to Position 2, which expires on June 30, 2020. Appoint Christopher Clark to Position 4, which expires on June 30, 2018. And appoint Michael Snid to Position 6, which expires on June 30, 2019.
Second.
Excellent. So it has been moved by Kim and seconded by Martin to appoint the slate of Budget Committee members as Kim read. Is there any discussion? Okay, great. So I'm not going to reread that, but if you would like to appoint the slate of Budget Committee members as moved by Kim and seconded by Martin, please say aye.
Aye.
If you would not like to, please say no. Okay, they are so appointed. Awesome. Okay, we find ourselves now at 7C. Appointment of Metro Policy Advisory Committee member and alternate. So we have been receiving communication from Metro regarding the NPAC or Metro Policy Advisory Committee vacancies. There are two. They have open nominations for a member and also an alternate. And you may remember that on October 6th, we nominated our own Mark Watson for that committee to fill the vacancy. And so we now need to approve the appointment of him, basically give him a vote so that he can get there. And we don't have an alternate person to vote for, but we may find ourselves voting later for the alternate if someone else decides they want to. So we're just voting on approving Mark Watson as our appointee to the Metro Policy Advisory Committee.
I move that we appoint Mark Watson to the Metro Policy Advisory Committee. Second.
I'm going to give that one to Wayne because he doesn't have one yet. Okay, so it's been moved by Martin and seconded by Wayne to approve the appointment of Mark Watson to the Metro Policy Advisory Committee. Is there any discussion? I can't tell who's first. Martin?
I just want to say thank you, Mark. I kind of wanted to do this, but I believe it needs an important, right? At the Kennedy School. And I just couldn't get there. So I really appreciate you making this call on a regular basis to participate in that group. It's an important group and thank you.
Martin?
Thank you, guys, for the nomination. I will be honored if I am chosen, so thank you for that. Point of order, Val, when we vote, do I not vote? Do I say?
No, you can vote for yourself.
Yeah, you can vote for yourself.
The rest of you, so.
I wasn't going to vote no. I just didn't vote.
Okay, I wanted to second what Martin said. I've been following the NPAC since I became a school board member with our previous appointee was from the Forest Grove School Board. It is really important, the discussions that happen there. It's really awesome that we get to have a seat at the table. And I'm really excited that for the regional school boards, the person representing us is clearly from our own board and it's going to be Mark. I think you've been great chatting, so I'm very excited. All right, so Martin moved and Wayne seconded to approve the appointment of Mark Watson to the NPAC. If you are in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
If you're not, please say no. All right, great. Okay, assuming there's not, you know, a massive rioting campaign, I think that Mark will be appointed, but we'll have to find out. I'll let events know in November. Okay, so now we are at 8HEA and HCE reports. We welcome you guys up here. Come on down.
Good evening. So up in the work session, I noticed that, playing along with Connie, her presentation about connected bargaining. And she asked a question of why do we do it? Management has one thought, unions, if you look at union history, the reason why we do connected bargaining, because the alternative is way worse. We don't want to go back to the days when we had to fight for our rights, for our pay, for our benefits, as in like literally standing up, going outside the streets and punching each other. That's not how we do stuff in the school district. We talk through issues, we work together. We come together to say, hey, this is a problem, whatever it may be. And we try to work collaboratively to solve it. And that's why I'm really proud of the work that our bargaining teams have done in the past. And I think there's going to be a lot of great work done in the future. I'm not sure if you're aware, but right now we're doing a comprehensive review of all job classifications, starting with the mess that is our office support with all the numerous positions and special things here and there that make it sort of this tangled weave of if someone is working in one job and they think they're working in another job, it's actually really difficult to really understand or really prove that. And hopefully, if we're able to standardize our job descriptions, not only will people be able to understand what their job is, but they'll also be able to identify when they're doing someone else's job and have, come together with their supervisor to have that conversation and go through a process that will really help sort of give that employee agency that gives them a choice to say, this is the work that's going outside my job description. And give management a choice to say either, oh, I actually, we want you doing that work and let's get you reclassified to the right position so you have the title and the duties and the responsibilities. Or say, see, I don't really think that's what I wanted you to do. Let's move you back towards your original job. And I think that in a previous era would have caused a lot of hardship. And the less friendly supervisors would say, well, that's the job. You just do it. And then that employee has to make a choice. Do they live with it or do they leave? And we're trying to make it to where our employees want to stay, where they're able to solve problems. Because I'll tell you that the number, like, when you think about your work life, we come to work every day to work with the students. And that really energizes and drives a lot of our employees. But just coming in and helping students isn't the whole story. It's the environment that our supervisors build, that community that they build. And if it's not a great community, those people are going to leave. We're going to lose great year-long employees. We're going to lose all that investment that we put in there to train them and prepare them for that work. And that's why I'm so happy that we have such a great bargaining process and we have such a great relationship with the HR that we're able to talk through our issues and really solve pretty much. I feel like I can go to Connie and Sayade about almost anything, but if work-related. And we can come up with a pretty good solution where either, where both sides can kind of agree that it makes sense. It's not arbitrary. I don't always agree with what they come down with, but I can see their side and I can see what they're trying to accomplish with their decisions. So if you're thinking about being on a bargaining team, and we hope you do, because it's going to be a lot of fun.
I often taught that.
All right, Joel Golei. I'm going to say elementary teacher on lead currently. I have the privilege of representing the Hillsborough Education Association members. I'm saying this because don't forget my apple. No, but thank you so much for recognizing all of our hard work and reading that American Education Week. You know, that means a lot. Thank you very much. And thank you for the upcoming apples that are going to be delivered to all the schools. And I noticed that Thursday of American Education Week is an opportunity for community members to be an educator for the day. And I just think that would be a wonderful, is a wonderful idea, so food for thought. I think that, I know that extra hands are always needed and that would be great support. In regards to Home Plate, I wanted to share that just recently the Hillsborough Education Association voted to provide two meals to Home Plate, one over Christmas vacation and one over spring break. And so that was nice to hear today, the conversation around our homeless teams. We have a wonderful new science adoption. However, the classroom teachers are sharing the manual, which is causing a hardship. I'd like to see the teachers, each classroom teacher have their own manual. I understand that they have to share the science kit, the material. But I was looking at a fifth-grade science manual last week and the very first lesson in that manual, the prep time was 75 minutes. And so to have to share a manual as well as the resources for the kit seems like a lot. We have an ESSA team as well, the Hillsborough Education Association. The teachers have formed and Devon's on the team as well. And we've been working and looking at data and talking to Travis and Dell. And we're looking forward to working collaboratively with a group of folks in the district to, around the Every Student Succeeds Act, to really make some successes and really drive a positive experience for all the students. I want to share with you this book here. It's pretty neat. It says, "Lifting Every Voice." It's 100 OEA educators, OEA's Oregon Education Association. And last year during the 100 Days of Session, there was a story from an educator, whether it be a bus driver or a school teacher. They shared a story about just a day in their life in the classroom or driving the bus or being the janitor. There's over 44,000 members of the Oregon Education Association and they serve more than happily in Oregon students with dedication and passion every day, and they always will. And so we must, the moral of this here, and I'm going to share this, I'm going to give this to Lisa, so that everyone may have it on the board to look at. But the bottom line is we must increase funding to give our students the schools that they deserve. We know that. You know, I've heard, I've listened here in the last few years and heard, you know, that we too, as educators, need to fight for that funding, that the school board can't do it alone, the districts can't do it alone. And so, you know, that's what we did. We had our message and it's page after page. Joe Vermeer is in here. And he's not here tonight because he actually has a part in, it's Godspell, I believe. And so he is busy practicing, or I guess what do you do? I'm not, rehearsal, rehearsal, thank you. But, you know, when I look through this, it's, a lot of it is class size. And you guys know how I feel about that. And I would love for every single, you know, classroom to be 20 to 1 or even 25 to 1 for middle school. It's really hard to go visit a class when there's 33 second graders or 34 third graders. And on top of the class size, there's often behavior issues. And so there's this kindergarten teacher from Clamath Falls, Oregon, and she was just sharing her story that she's had anywhere from 20 to 32 students. But with budget cuts now, she has, what she used to have, a full-time aide in the classroom, as well as if there was a student that was on an IEP or needed the extra supports. And especially with kindergarten, because the students come in and we don't know if they need the support. So, you know, we have to do all this at the student study teams and collect the data before they qualify. collect the data before they qualify for any special services. And so there's a gap between the services they need and they receive just for us, teachers, educators to collect the data. And so now she, you know, she's saying that she has 15 minutes a day of an aide, where she used to have a full-time aide. And though she has four, 24 students, she has four students with extreme behaviors that require nearly constant attention and redirection. And I'd like to say that this is only in Klamath County, Oregon, but it's not. We have this here in our district as well. We have the same struggles. Our kindergarten teachers have the same struggles. And, you know, it's nobody's fault in this room, but the bottom line is, is it's funding. And we do have some money here and we choose to allocate it in certain ways. And you know, it all comes down to funding and prioritizing the current funds that we have and where they're most needed. And I recognize that. But my ask is, can the board possibly reprioritize some of the funds? Or can the board roll up their sleeves with HEA and HCU and work together at the state level to secure better and more adequate funding? I understand as HEA that often I don't advocate, and we don't advocate as HEA presidents, just for specific members. We advocate for all of our students. But we're here at a critical mass when it comes to student behaviors and the lack of resources. And especially at kindergarten in first grade. And I'm afraid I'm going to lose some teachers. And I need your help. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Echo Devon's comments about, we have been very collaborative in the past and that it's a bargaining process that's been worked on over the last 10 years or so. It does get better and better. Agree, we don't always, we don't always agree on everything perfectly. But we do have a process in place that allows for great discussion and problem solving to take place. So encouraged by that as we go into bargaining again this year. Have been involved with a number of community outreach opportunities over the last couple of weeks, starting with a number of coffee chats that we did, both in English and Spanish. And it is, it is always worthwhile to hear what's on the mind of the parents that show up to those. So that's been very worthwhile. Thank you to the board members that have showed up to those as well. Was really encouraged and just impressed with the Abbott site visit that we did over at Century High School. Just the passion that those students speak at the program with, and the staff members that are involved with that and the difference that it's making in their lives. Make me feel like Century really has, is getting that right. And they are leading the path among our high school boards for every high school to be instituting that program in the same way that Century is. They really have an incredible job with that. Fourth thing I would say is that I had the opportunity to go over to McCain Elementary yesterday to highlight some of the community partnerships that have been taking place. If you look at the growth in partnerships that have occurred over at McCain over the last several years, really, really impressive what they've been able to do. Look for that on a video coming to you soon. And then finally, I would say that we have been doing presentation after presentation to get the facts out regarding the upcoming bond. As you know, we, when we, when the district talks about it, we only talk about it in a very factual way and in terms of what it would provide for our students. Had the opportunity to have a great conversation with HCU last week. Have been over to KUIK a couple of times over the last couple of weeks. Have presented a number of staff meetings, community groups and businesses. And just feel like we're getting the word out and people are asking great questions and encouraged by the response. So with that, I will turn it to you.
All right. Before we start, I think probably it's got to the end already, but I passed the word in here for everyone. So I forgot to mention that before. You did, but you guys can read. So great. Okay. You're very lucky. Go ahead, Jen.
Lot of opportunity to be out in the community this last month. My, one of my favorites was the Abbott at Century. Very proud that they all went to Western Oregon University. They all applied at that time and they were all accepted. So they're Abbott students. So it's a wonderful program and I'm glad we're modeling that at other high schools. We also had a faith lunch here that I really enjoyed, as well as I did a tour with Martin at City View Charter, where we, the principal and just tour and talked about their program there. So that was pretty exciting. And again, just vote yes for the bond.
I had a fantastic time with my colleague Jackie Spross and also our tremendously gifted superintendent Mike Scott and others. And a number of opportunities, and I'll just stick out with you. City View thing was very enjoyable. Sort of the crew over there and they welcomed us warmly. The coffee chats, if you have not had a chance to join Superintendent Scott at a coffee chat, please do. They're a lot of fun. It's really an opportunity to have an hour and a half of really just intimate discussion on the topics that you choose. And I would really, really encourage those. I had no idea how enjoyable and really you could dive into a particular issue that really is of interest. The faith luncheon was just ethically awesome. Many members of the community came and participated. My own pastor was there and it was a special joy to see him and his wife, by the way. And so really, really great outreach of the community, very effective engagement really across the community. That was a grand slam. I didn't know how awesome that was going to be. That was truly extraordinary. The Optimists, the Optimists love us. And that's a wonderful thing. They support the bond and that's a great civic group that meets for breakfast and they had us and let us give a pitch to the bond and it was very warmly received. As you know, I've promised that I'll go see all the school principals in their building in the first six months. And so I had an opportunity to continue that. And I met Dr. Michelle Jensen. And that was pretty amazing visit at Brookwood and got my own level of comfort with our ability to build a new school on the same spot, land as the old school. So yes, we can do it. And I also had a chance to go meet Linda Harrington and see her amazing HOA team. Met some of the students that were there and that was really uplifting. And so I really enjoyed those two visits and seeing those two schools and programs. And I just want to say, I'm still blown away by the Abbott lunch. It was just unbelievable how on fire everybody is, including members of the community. A gentleman by the name of Luis Nava, whom many of us know, is very passionate about our district and our kids. He was there and he spoke powerfully about what Abbott has done. And to me, that's testimony that that is pretty powerful. But I got this way cool shirt. And I want, I want to model it. And I just love this phrase, work hard and be kind. And everybody in the Abbott program had that. So I just had to get one of these. And here's a little Go Jags thing on the back too. There we are. Oh, and lastly, there we have it stamped and signed, ready for delivery.
What is that, Martin?
It is the ballot for the upcoming, for the upcoming election.
Oh, okay.
Whole size of my ballot are filled out. Yes.
Good. Lots of exciting things going on. And it's just been wonderful to see as the ballots came out to the community this week. And of course, I had a number of opportunities and talked to people about the bond and what it means to the district. And got an interesting question from a skeptic saying, this is a ballot. Nobody, not one person in the ballot that were in the book is complaining about this or objecting to it. And I said, that's one of the things that I'm most proud of, all the hard work is going in the bond for its unilateral support from groups all over the community of all dispositions that have passed the work and forward. And I always say.
Yeah, just excited about the partnerships that the city and the district do together and the things that I get to participate in. I think it's really awesome. And I also heard some things about the bond there. Just feedback and saying, you should really tell people that it doesn't increase their taxes. I'm like, I know. They were giving me feedback. Lead with that. It doesn't increase your taxes. I'm like, yeah, we put it on the information, but just a reminder, but it doesn't. And the other thing that I participated over this week was going to an OSVA training, more of a meeting with other school board members of color and a caucus that OSVAs are starting and really talking more about structure and hoping that I can gather some resources from other school board members across the state and what opportunities they have created or what new initiatives they've done. And I think that's where they can just enter into point of order that I can bring back.
Just a few things. Wanted to thank Travis and Connie for the presentations upstairs. They were tremendous. And as a new board member, I'm finding all of this new information, I mean, like trying to absorb as much as I can. And I thank you guys for doing that. Being out talking about the bond, you know, it's important. We've been doing it. All of us have been doing it. Visited a number of different schools. One comes to mind as the, during the HEA presentation, she was flabbergasted that there was 32 kids. And Tobias Almieri has a fifth grade with 35 kids. And it was heartwarming to see their PTO take action to try and get her some help. A piece of technology, trying to deploy a piece of technology for her and her classroom to try and make a difference. So that was very heartwarming to see. I know we had a lot of extra discussion over just esoteric policy language. I just, I just want to take a second sort of address, you know, we understand that extending many circumstances, you guys have ways to address these things one-on-one. As a board member, we don't have, we don't have that at our disposal. What we have are policies. All we can do is try to create policies that provide a framework for you to have these conversations that you need to have. So all you saw, I think, was us trying to do a good job. So I understand it was weird and got in the weeds a little bit, but it really is just us trying to do a good job. And I'll close with seconding what Martin, Martin's shirt said. Can't really do much better for a model of life than work hard and be kind. So big fan.
I have a couple of things. One, I should have probably brought it up upstairs. As part of serving on the LPC, I was offered another opportunity to attend the National Conference and Legislative Days in Washington DC in February. And as part of the LPC, they provide scholarship that covers not all of the expense, but bulk of the expense to do that. And so I applied for that and I'm excited. It will be my second year. And as you know, there's a lot of things that touch education, that decisions that are made at a federal level. And so really excited about being able to participate in that. Kudos to the planning team for the faith luncheon. You picked all the right speakers.
Wow. Did they ever, yeah?
Yeah. Jennifer spoke from Luride High School, who we've seen present to this board before. And it was just a great panel of speakers. Thank you for that. Thank you to my fellow board members, community members, principals, teachers, staff members, the number of people who are out on the phone, knocking on doors, doing the hard work of really informing our public about this ballot measure. Not only is it no new taxes, but 70% of people in our community who potentially could vote on this don't have kids and just don't understand necessarily what our day-to-day needs are, what school looks like. And so it's so important for us to tell our stories. To Martin's point, your ballot has two sides, folks. Flip the ballot to get to the Hillsborough side. Do not forget to flip the ballot. It's really easy to miss when you open it and you only see that. I have a note from Lexi, who is our campaign staffer. This is the first day I was telling Lisa. I can't think of the last day that I did not see Lexi. It has probably been since the end of August when I returned from vacation. And she says, I forgot that you had a board meeting tonight. Will you please make sure that everyone there knows that the sun is going to be shining this week? And that everyone should ask for a turf of their own neighborhood to walk because you can break it up however you would like. But let's take advantage of this week of sunshine and knock on our neighbors' doors. And it's play season, which means after you phone bank or walk on this weekend, you have opportunities to see a lot of entertainment for very low cost in this community. Liberty High School this weekend is having their closing weekend of the League of Youth, which I believe is an IPSN play. So if you want something very serious and old. Hill High is doing Cinderella Thursday night, matinees on Friday and Saturday because it is kid-friendly. And the Laramie Project is at Quanco High School Thursday, Friday and Saturday night. That is meant for mature audiences. Take your kids to Cinderella. Take your high schoolers to Laramie. That's it.
Before I jive into mine, do you have a go at the matinee times? Because when I looked at the Hill High website, I only saw 7:00 PM.
Two o'clock.
And I actually do want to take the kids.
Friday, Saturday, two o'clock.
Okay. So I have a short list of things. The first thing is just a Doris's story. Mark was asking if he could vote for himself. The first time I ever voted for myself was when I was running for school board because I learned that lesson the hard way when I was in high school and I was nominated for the prom court. And I just couldn't like stomach voting for myself. It just felt really wrong. And then I lost. Probably by more than one vote. Let's be honest. But still, you know, it was every solid answer. I've only got one vote. I don't know. Anyway, so about the bond, most of my things are about the bond as well. So yesterday, my husband was filling out his ballot and was talking our kids kind of through the language and what the question, you know, should, yes, no, and what all those things meant and trying to get their perspective. And my son, Kayden, said something really adorable. He's six and he suggested that my husband voted yes on the Hillsborough school bond. I'm pretty sure that my husband took that advice on his secret ballot. I'm pretty sure. But the reason that Kayden said, you know, his main reason was people deserve to be safe. And I thought that was a really good kind of thought process for a six-year-old, you know, understanding, you know, wondering what seismic was and watching through that. And kids deserve to be safe. And I think that's true. And that's one of the primary reasons why I would be voting yes to renew this bond. That is not an increase in our tax rate. It's so exciting. Let's see, I will be dropping off my yes vote and probably another yes vote for my husband's secret ballot on Thursday at the library. So, you know, if you're watching the video of this board meeting, two people, and you're going to vote yes, you don't know what to do with your ballot, you can actually take it to the library and just put it in a box. You didn't have to buy a stamp. It's amazing. So you should do that for sure. And then on Saturday, I will campus, or I've assigned it to one way, probably will campus because it's not going to be raining.
Sure.
For the bond. I'm very excited. Last time I campaigned, it was a great success. People were really excited about the bond. And I am too. So I'm looking forward to November 7. And then finally, not related to the bond, I just, I want to thank you guys, Devon and Jill for coming up and sharing so much great information with us and getting kind of deep philosophically. I really appreciate that. I heard you and I share, I share your values and your concerns. And I hope that we can, you know, kind of move forward as a team in the future and I think that all the folks agree with that. So just want to give you guys a shout out. Thank you. All right. We, I think we're done. Okay. I think this might be the second time that we jerk early. Just saying. All right. So we will jerk.